Okay. Good evening, folks, and welcome to the August 22nd workshop meeting of the Spencer Board of Selectmen. Please rise with me and make your pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start with the first agenda item, I just thought I'd let you know I'm still a little new at this, but I understand I have some discretion as the board chair. And although workshop nights are not as many items and it's not as formal as other meetings, anytime we have the public in attendance for workshop meeting and they'd like to speak and citizens input, I'm happy to entertain that. We always have to be conscious of time and, of course, and how far we can take a discussion. But as far as I'm concerned, for people listening and for people here tonight, and many of you are here for the public hearing, if you want to get to the town hall and have something you want to say to the board, I'm all in favor of hearing it. So just to let you know, that is something that we will make possible, even though it's not a formal item on the agenda like it is with regular meetings. Okay, so with that, well, our first item involves a National Grid poll hearing. And we have, in conformity with the requirements of Section 22, Chapter 166 of the general laws, we have notified abutters that a public hearing will be held here at the town hall, the 22nd day of August at 6:00 p.m. Abutters have been notified indeed, so we'll now open the public hearing at 6:07. And we'll start with Representative of National Grid, just to give us a report on the project, and then we can open it up for questions and comments. And if you give your -- come to the front table, please, and identify yourself and your position with National Grid.
Hi, my name is Ricardo Maldonado. I'm a designing engineer on behalf of National Grid. I believe everybody has a copy of the proposed line. So I want to start off by saying that that poll line has been updated. So your copies are obsolete. There is a minor change that came on behalf of one of the abutters. So this happened last week, so I went ahead and updated it. If you guys would like --
Yes, I think we do have that.
We do have -- okay, yeah. I did submit it last week, I wasn't sure if you --
Brendan's very efficient, got it right out to us.
I don't know if anybody else would like to see a copy of the change?
I appreciate that update. I know these things happen right down to the last minute, so everybody's on the same page.
The specific change will come on Sheet 3. And the change is simply the length of span between polls 124-5, 124-6, and 124-7. A counterpart of mine, Mr. Dave Evans, met with Marilyn Flavin, and she requested that some of the polls that would lay in front of her property be shifted over to the side, which we agreed, and we updated the change because of her request. So besides that, the poll line starts up on Page 1, from Poll 124, which is the poll just past the black and white grill? Bar and grill? Black and white grill? We will cross the road over, and we will maintain a poll line of one circuit for about three poles on the west side of North Spencer Road and cross over. And we will stay on that side of the road as evenly spaced as we can in the public right-of-way until we bypass Old North Spencer Road and meet up with -- the line ends up coming outside onto North Spencer Road again.
Okay. Forgive me for interrupting, but I should have said in the beginning that for folks who are watching, and obviously not abutters or privy to all the information, this is a short stretch of North Spencer Road between the black and white restaurant and Mary House. If that helps position it in your memory of Spencer Roads. Thank you, please continue.
That's essentially what National Grid is proposing with this petition hearing.
We saw that it was a -- the note was that you were going to be installing 11 poles, but a couple of us have counted the poles and there are 12, what we -- is that -- just for the record.
There seems to be a mistake on my half. Poll, the very last poll on Page 4, 15-50, is an existing poll.
Oh, okay, then that should be darkened.
That should be blacked out, I'm sorry about that.
Well, that explains it. Well, you know, the town trusts us with the budget, and I want to make sure we can count those numbers correctly. So --
Good, I'm glad to have that clarified. So that is an existing poll?
Yes.
Okay. Makes sense.
Now, at this point, we can entertain questions, abutters, questions from the public, comments, points of information. Anyone like to speak up, or Steve?
Just a couple of comments or confirmations with regard to the plan. You didn't indicate staying within the public right-of-way, but it looks like you have 124-1, 124-3 around St. Joseph's Abbey property.
Yes, polls except for those. And we have spoke to the abbey and they are okay with the speed of the traffic.
Okay. And then one of the comments with regard to the sheet that my highway informant picked up on is 124-6. It's labeled as six feet from the edge of pavement, but it looks like the stake out there is closer to eight feet. And you like the stake when it's eight feet, if you're able to hold closure to that. 124-6. He measured the stake itself and it looks like it's about eight feet from the edge of pavement. So hopefully you can stick to where the -- Your plan is going where the stakes are anyway, is our understanding. So I guess that's my question. Stick with the stake at eight feet, or?
I would like, if I stake it, I would like to stick with the stake.
If you're okay with that, if you would like to move it back? Well, we always take further from the road, so the stake is greater than the six feet.
It is behind a guardrail, correct?
That's the non-guardrail.
That one is not a guardrail. Okay, yeah, that says right.
That's one of the ones in front of Ms. Flavin's property.
Okay.
I would like to stake, stick with the stake, if at all possible.
We would too.
Okay, great, thank you.
I apologize. Steve, I meant to ask you for your comments or any additional information on the project.
And that's all we have at this time.
Oh, quick, was that the -- how recent was that?
This morning.
Okay, good. Because I know Dave Evans had moved and he restaked it, and if he restaked it there, I --
And we can get Ms. Flavin to confirm that if the stake's in her yard right now or whether they agree to it, Dave. No, I think we probably close that with the sheet.
Yes. Did you manage to see where the stakes were recently around your property? Were you okay with that?
Where they are?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one stake for the pole and then another stake for the, I forget where.
Or an anchor, yes.
And that's okay where it is?
Yes, we prefer where the stakes are right now, yes.
I know, I didn't hear all of your conversation. And you were mentioning six feet and eight feet.
What I was saying, Ms. Flavin, is on the plan I have here in front of me, it says that one of the poles is going to be approximately six feet from the edge of pavement. But the stake is actually approximately eight feet from the edge of pavement. So we would like to stick with it.
Oh, the stake is eight feet?
Yes. If you're happy with where the stake is right now, then I think all three of us are happy, at least as far as I go.
When I was talking to David Evans when he came over and discussing it, I pointed out to him that there is a drain pipe under the grass. When that driveway was first put in, the town asked us to put a dip in the bottom for the water runoff. And it goes into this pipe that goes under the lawn and comes out in the field. So I guess he thought where he put the stake, there would be enough room for the pole and not disturb that drain. I don't know if that's something you want to look at.
I'm sure that Highway Foreman would have looked at that.
I can look at that today, find where it is.
Did you see, you know where the drain is?
Yes, I did.
In the field?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Have been no concerns with differing with its function where we hit a mark?
Full on one-side guy, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting us through that process.
No, that's a good place to get it all clarified. It's nice to know that we go out and check these things. Everybody should be glad to know that. If you identify yourself, and please.
Evelyn Flavin, 202 North Spencer Road.
Evelyn?
I just have a quick question. So now, at this point, we'll end up with two sets of poles and lines. One, it's going up Old 31, and one that will be now on New 31. And I guess my question is, is there any way to configure this, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate for this meeting, so that we just have what's servicing our property and not what's running through to like the black and white? If you look at the black dots, those are what's running through our property on Page 3. Actually, 2, 3, and 4.
The black dots, is this incorrect?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
So, yes.
Old Spencer Road is, old North Spencer Road, aren't there some houses on there?
Yes.
Okay, so they would probably need their own poles, I'm guessing.
I may through the chair.
Make sure we're talking about, everybody's on the same poll here.
This is a unique situation with regard to 31. You know, the poles did run down the old 31. There's at least two locations, if not three, where the poles are in the old alignment. And in one of the other locations near Thompson Pond Road, we still own the old alignment. And the poles are still within an old alignment which we own. In this case, the old alignment is primarily privately owned, and the main circuits go through the private property, meaning it's not the services just to the property. It's like having the poll line go through your front yard. That's what they have. They have all of the services going through their front yard, not just their services. Because there's only one line running up through there now.
So it goes to Flavin's house and then up to Old 31?
Old 31 is the Flavin's house.
Right.
Right. So there's Old 31 and then there's New 31 right here. We own the property between New 31 and Old 31. And on Old 31, before they moved the road, that's where electricity went up, but they never moved the line. And it goes all the way straight up to the black and white.
So is that poll, one of the polls in question, 120-84, is that my reading of correctly? That is not a poll that's?
The existing ones are 123, 123.5, 122. Those are the ones that are on our property.
So the question is, is if we can move the old property?
Sure, if this is the direction the project takes.
Okay, 123 here, I see. These are the ones we're talking about here.
Since there's going to be a new poll line on the other side of the road anyway, why would we need to have all that going through our property instead of just what we need to service our property?
That is a good question.
Ricardo, for clarification, the, are all the, so not all the existing poles that are numbered are being eliminated? Only some are being?
None of the existing poles are being eliminated, and they won't be touched by us during this project.
Oh, they're not coming out at all? Oh, see, I --
No, they're existing, and instead of doing work on those poles, we're going around them. As to not touch them.
But they still carry line, they still carry the power?
They do carry power to the Flavin's property.
Okay, I thought some of those were leaving, my mistake.
And also to Old North Spencer Road, right?
Excuse me?
Also to Old North Spencer Road?
We won't be touching any poles along Old North Spencer Road.
No, no, let's get back to the topic, okay? The topic is the Flavin property, okay? Their concern is that they're getting, they probably have a J-pole on the property that brings electricity to their home. All right? That also spirals up to Old North Spencer Road. And a lady has expressed a concern that sounds to me like she doesn't want that other electricity that goes up to Old Spencer Road going on her pole on her property. She would prefer to have it, I'm guessing, on a pole that's on New Route, not Route 31, New North Spencer Road. I'm sorry. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is that, can you do that when you're doing this? Is that going to be a big problem, or?
That's something I can't answer here. I'd have to go back to my boss and talk about that.
Okay, well, we meet next month.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Thank you very much. Kevin Shaughnessy from National Grid. So the tariff, for this project, this poll line that's being built is just for the abbey job. It's going to have a feeder that just supplies and takes power back from the abbey back to the substation. If there's a change that happens with the existing poll line, existing infrastructure, then the existing rates and tariffs take over. And if we have to move the line, then in fact, a discussion would have to be made by the person requesting that that line be moved for their benefit. And that would be a cost to the customer to do that, per the tariffs approved by the Mass Power and Public Utilities. So the fact that we're putting in a poll line is explicitly for the feeder that will take power and supply power when it's needed to the solar array. It's a separate issue than existing infrastructure. Those poles are being constructed for that feeder.
I understand what you're saying, it just doesn't feel like it makes sense. Because you have brand-new poles and lines going across the street for, not only, you know, I mean, this is for the abbey land, but if you look down the street, you're already putting your poles and lines and you're upgrading them and moving the wires up for the existing customers that are further down towards the center of Spencer on the same road.
Mr. Chairman, those transfers along North Spencer Road, those are transferring from the existing line over to the new poles. But those, there's no system improvement associated with that. As Kevin previously stated, the new line along the new poles going along North Spencer Road is a dedicated feeder, an express feeder for the solar array. So the ability to move the existing line off of Old Spencer Road to the new poles that are being requested as part of this petition would be a separate system improvement that, under the Massachusetts tariff, cannot be passed on to the solar customer.
So the new poles are carrying exclusively the power from the abbey, from the solar array?
For this requested stretch of the line, that's correct.
I see. Steve?
So just when you thought things couldn't be more complicated. This abbey solar project has been a bit of a thorn in the problem from the beginning. When they first came to the planning board with a multi-billion dollar project that included the destruction of 80 acres of woodlands and approximately about the disturbance of 100 or so acres, I pointed out to them that they really were likely in exceedance of the meet the thresholds. And during those planning board public hearing meetings, I had asked for a few different things that I had a very hard time getting. And one of them in particular was that they should not have segmented the design of that project from the design of this power. That should have all been worked out with the project to begin with. And now we're dealing with two separate projects when if they were all combined into one project, they would have gotten the proper review altogether at one time. And I had pointed out during the planning processes that by them segmenting the project, they had actually violated state statutes. You're not supposed to segment projects in that way. And I pointed that out to the developer then, and they refused to submit the design for these power poles. And that was something that we had asked for years ago, so that we didn't have problems like this. That's why you don't segment projects of that size where you have power feeds like this. So now we're looking at this thing on a micro level, and we're answering it on a micro level versus a whole project level, which is the way it should have been answered to begin with. They've created their own problem by doing it this way, and I anticipated we would probably get to this point. And now we're in a situation to where they're talking about two completely different circuits. They had originally come to us with the design about six or eight weeks ago, and we were, we had objected to it because of that whole two-circuit situation. And brought up these same points that I'm describing to you right now. And we had asked for them to look at keeping the one circuit. We did talk to the Flavins a little bit about what they were, what they might prefer to allow that line to stay on their property. I know we looked at an underground alternative, but I think that that met with some disapproval because of the magnetic that would still remain and would actually be closer to the property being on ground level versus pole height level. Long story short, the project was subdivided like it should not have been. And now we're here micromanaging something that has other issues, you know, property right issues, electrical issues, and so forth. I don't know what the answer is, but it's a problem that was created by the developer. And now we're all having to try to solve it on a micro level, and I just don't think it's appropriate. And where it goes from here, I think it should be looked at in a lot greater detail than it is. And instead of trying to call out this one little piece and talk about it like it's, you know, just a few hundred yards of power, we're talking about what's a total project value. Is it, I don't know, is it $150 million? What's it, is it 60 million? What is this project value? You know, it should have been designed, the whole thing. The power feed circuit in addition to the solar farm. And now we're, now we have a solar farm that's being built, and they still have the power situation worked out. That's why you don't segment projects of this size.
I have a question for Evelyn. Evelyn, did you raise this question of combining the poles or getting it?
I did.
Earlier on, and the response was that it was separate?
Well, we looked at this from every angle that we could have possibly looked at it from.
I see.
And, you know, initially, they were going to come through, National Grid was going to come through, and put the poles and lines up. But I had mentioned that I didn't think they had an easement. We did research, they did research, there's no easement. So, and then we've talked about it at length, I've done research at length. But there's been no meeting of the minds to this point. And so this is another alternative that they're presenting. And my voice is, if this is what you want to present, well, you know, then I think it makes sense, at least to me, to not have, you know, everybody else's power running by our house if we don't have to. I see, I drive up and down 31 all the time. I see many lines of poles and wires with just one wire going across to service the house that needs it. And that's my question, why can't we do that too?
Well, you know, to get back to, Ron, just respond to your point, Steve. You know, we're, obviously, we're not in a position here, we're not going to pass judgment on what, you know, other boards did in the reasoning. It does sound like, does sound to me like we may need some more time to look at this. I'm not sure what the answer is. It's, as you said, there's been no meeting of the minds at this point. I'm not sure, you know, not going to come up with something here on the spot.
And John, you have to remember that it's not just us. There's three other abutters as well that have the same property rights. I don't believe there's an easement anywhere down that strip of land. So, you know, we all need to agree, or?
Steve?
Just as a comment on the last thing, I would not put the fault on the plan anymore. It would be, in my opinion, on the developer for keeping it segmented and not responding to those requests that submitted as one complete project inclusive of the power line. The planning board review said there again.
Understood, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think it matters, you know, who's at fault here. You yourself stated the law, state law is probably broken, I believe. It's water over the dam at this point. The abbey has a big commitment and investment up there. The trees have already been knocked down, you know, the panels are up, or the process of being put up. I know there are panels up there, I've driven by them. And yet, you know, now we've got a Flavin problem here. And National Grid folks, I'm having a hard time understanding why you can't accommodate this lady's request. And you say charging people money, if you can't find an easement, it's on her property. I mean, this may have been, I don't know how old, I don't know which house you live in, if you live in the Colonial or?
We live in the Colonial.
That's what I thought, that's been there for a long time, as long as I can remember. And I've been in town since 1960. The old days, a lot of times, you know, people would get permission word of mouth. Yeah, go ahead, put it up. You know, I don't know when they started getting things in writing, maybe I'm wrong. But, and I don't know the cost, I have to plead ignorance in that. But it seems to me, if it's not too costly, you ought to be willing to do that, and then we stick a fork in this and move on. Now, you did say, sir, that you could check on that?
Yeah, we can definitely go back and see what are our other options to?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this new line a transmission line or a distribution?
Distribution.
We would appreciate, I would appreciate it if you could look into that and get back to us as soon as possible.
Okay.
Tony?
Other comments from the board? Is this the, with this large project, is this the last request for, you know, a change in the poles? Or are there, Steve, is it, you anticipate additional?
Yep.
I think this is the last one, I believe. I don't think everything else is worked out.
National Grid can confirm that, we have no other issues.
How about the existing poles that are doubled up right now? Is there a timetable to move the cable and poll lines off of them? Because we have a huge issue in this town with double poles, and I think there's 52 now on that road?
We've been in contact with Verizon and Charter Communications. As our piece of the project comes to a close, they'll be doing the cable transfers. And they have access to the same database we all share for those utility transfers. So that has been coordinated.
It took us four years to get 60 poles taken off and, unfortunately, to the abbey, stalling on their project to get some action. And I don't want to go down that road again and have all these double poles that, you know, 42 Cranberry is a, there's no lines on it. It's ready to come down, but yet it's still a broken pole. Pleasant Street, same thing, so.
Kevin, can you speak to the?
42 is done on the list, and that was on the list previously on Cranberry Meadow.
We've made a lot of progress over the last few months for moving poles.
So before I start with that to the selectmen, to the chair, the 42 Cranberry, is that a street address or is it a pole?
That's a pole, that's a pole number 42 Cranberry. It is, it does have a 2x4, it is braced, but it's broken. It's been cut for a year now. With nothing on it, and it's just hanging out there.
So communications with Charter and with Verizon. As of this afternoon, there are 15 poles still with Charter to do their transfers. And once Charter is done, then Verizon takes over and comes in and transfers their wire. Once those are transferred, then we can pull the poles. So just this morning, Charter updated all their database. They had 53 poles on North Spencer Road. Now they only have 15. So there was a lag in them updating the database, so that Verizon will get notice. And truly, Verizon didn't have a shot at that until this morning. So they had no awareness of the fact that that many poles were out there, ready for them to send a crew out to start transferring. But now they're aware of it, I've communicated with the community manager for Verizon of that as well. And Charter had committed with me that they'll be moving to get the rest of their poles that they can transfer on, transfers, so they can move forward with Verizon and then pull the poles. the poles that we have out there out of the ground.
Was there a timetable for that?
I would say fall, mid-fall, we should be done with the pulling the poles, provided everyone moves the other utilities and we don't have a hammer to, to influence them. We're just trying, and the communication is good when we all use that tool called engines, the report that everyone keeps there of who's next to go for transfers. So, and I, I had provided assurance that I would watch that, so we're on it. So once they're, they've done their transfers and we get notified of it, our, our crews will be pulling the poles out of the ground so we don't have double poles on North Spencer Road. Mr. Shaughnessy, you're talking about all the double poles in town or just focusing on those? Right now, my focus is North Spencer Road. Okay, that's the 15 you're referring to? Correct. We, we have no, we have no wire on poles in Spencer anymore. So what we're watching is just the other utilities, with the exception of 42, that sounds like it's ready to be pulled out of the ground, we can pull that out of the ground and, and that one. But at this moment in time, we don't have any transfers to do that we're aware of. The database is not 100%, but whenever we're notified, we put it in the database so we can attack it. We were, you know, it's, it remains a, you know, a sensitive subject here in town and just, we're just, I mean, you know, starting to, you know, set some timetable for us is, is helpful and, you know, we'll, we'll look forward to that and, you know, I'm glad Chris pointed out the, the number 42, which was, which was not on the list, so. So we'll, you know, so we, we can assume that they'll continue on, on those poles. Now, as, as for the, yes?
Father Vincent from the Abbey. I have a question for Kevin, to just try to understand the moving the, the power lines on Old Spencer Road to incorporate them into the new proposed poles. You, I understand there's something about that's a public util, Department of Public Utilities?
Correct.
Something? Can you explain that a little bit more to me?
So any work that we do for existing lines, if there's, and we have, we have permission to be where we are due to granted locations, that was formerly a road, so we had the right to be there. We don't have the right to change anything that's there, but we have the right to maintain our existing lines. And with that, if there's a change requested by a customer to change that situation, then that change, unless there's a reliability enhancement aspect to it, that portion of that cost that change would bring is not billable to the customer. But if there is no reliability enhancement to that for the neighborhood at large, not just those customers, it can't just be that customer. If there's, if the lines are acceptable where they are according to standards, then any change that a customer has requested because they're not happy with the way it's set up would be billable to the customer once those costs are known as to what that change would cost the company. Because ratepayers in Massachusetts would pick up that cost. And if the change is only required because that customer is requesting it, then the ratepayers in Massachusetts can't pick up that bill, the customer has to.
And we do not know what the cost would be to move those lines onto new proposed poles.
I'm not sure that an entire new pole line would be needed to do that. You'd have, you'd have to have room on the other side of the street or somewhere where they want to move to. And that other pole line that has the feeder on it is already there. So you would need a, you would need a design solution or at least an investigation into it to see what could be done. Mr. Shaughnessy, this is the only situation where, where exclusive, poles that exclusively carry the, the new, the new power from the abbey are required in all the cases that the, all the new poles were, were carrying service to customers along the road? This is a very large array, and by virtue of its size, when we hit an array over a certain amount of size, and I'm not sure what it is because I'm not an engineer, but when you get to a certain size, that size feeder has to go straight to the substation just by virtue of, this is a 16 and a half megawatt array. So that size is handled directly out of the substation. It's not, it's not, it has, it has, there is a precedent for it, it has happened in central Mass because we have so much solar, but it's, normally the arrays are not large enough to warrant a separate feeder for the solar array. Sorry, maybe I wasn't clear, but on, on 31, all the other new poles you've put in were replacing existing poles. We, we got a double pole situation and they're, so the, they're, they were upgraded to carry the power to customers as well as the, is the, the, the power from the array?
They are.
Okay.
There's a top section and a bottom second.
This is the only, the only stretch where... Correct. The only stretch where you need, where you're setting up a whole new set of poles to carry the power from the abbey separately? That's what I'm told by the project. Okay, all right. Thoughts to the board? It, it sounds like we, some, we do need some more information to, you know, to, you know, to, to make a, a fair decision on this, you know, one of them being money, one of them being time to, to work out the, the design if that's what's required in the end.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to continue the hearing on September 12th.
To continue your...
To continue the hearing on September 12th when we next meet.
Well...
It's three weeks away, I hope that gives you enough time to get the answers that folks need.
And we can be in touch with the parties. Do you have a sense of the time required, Ricardo?
I'd just like to sort it out as soon as possible.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we can, about costs and timetables, it, Father Vincent, you know that, you know, no desire to, to hold it up. It seems, it seems like a, you know, a reasonable question is being raised and it, I'm, it's regrettable that, you know, we couldn't come to terms on it before. Gary?
Well, I think it should have been brought up before. Here's the problem you're faced with, is you've got two different issues. One is moving back to a substation which is holding up their project, changing those other poles is an entirely different situation, has to be evaluated, has to be engineered in whether it's three weeks from now or six months from now. That engineering project would not be done at that point. And I don't know if you all are dealt with National Grid, but it doesn't happen overnight. That's obvious. So you can postpone this meeting, but I can tell you the next time we're back, Gary, we're not going to have any more answers when we're back.
Well, the gentleman said he would look into it and, and do his best to get us the information that we need.
And again, my brother...
Maybe, maybe they, maybe the, the new improved National Grid.
May I just make a comment? I'm certainly not trying to hold up the abbey's property.
And I understand that, you're saying the right stuff.
But, but to me, it looks like there's two pieces. One, we're trying to approve the poles and lines across the street. We have no problem with the poles and lines going across the street, we just, and I don't know that we need to agree on both of these things at the same time, but our concern is the poles that are on our property and if those wires can be incorporated in.
Which, which is going to take an engineering, engineering study.
Right, but that...
It's just going to hold up their project, which isn't going to get us to your project fast enough to make it happen all at the same time, is my old point.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The poles across the street are a start though, and maybe once something does get figured out, it could stem from those poles once it's installed across the street.
My only thought is I don't want to lose a right so that once you do what you're going to do and then say, well, it's too late. So if there's an agreement that, you know, you're seriously going to take a look at this and put your best effort forward to look into it, because I don't want to hold up their project, then I would consider that, but, you know, I don't want to be left in the dust.
There's a couple of things we can do as a board, and that is to, to kind of put some pressure on National Grid, you hear it every time we talk about double poles. To stop that line isn't going to benefit anybody anyway, that's my whole point. You know, just like the pole that says it's six feet, that change will be eight feet on here before we even vote on this. It will be, it's the agreement I just heard. Along with, and we do have the right to say that, you know, we expect, part of the stipulation of approving this is that you go back to National Grid, to your company, and get that in motion to see if it's feasible. Or we come back in three weeks, I don't care which. Unfortunately, that's what it takes.
Well, this...
May I still, so just a question, it, it may, may be wonderful for Evelyn to have the, the lines moved over, what would happen on, for the other people on that North, Old Spencer Road?
They'd all have to agree.
They would all have to agree?
Exactly.
To the move across or away from the current poles that they have? Yep?
Yes.
Yep.
So each one of them would have to know what would be the additional cost?
May I, Mr. Chairman? May I follow up on that? Is the cost borne by everybody or is it borne on the Flavins or how does that work?
We don't know when there's multiple customers.
Yeah, we'd have to look into that with multiple customers, none of us here know offhand.
Okay. We have that information too when you come back, we'd appreciate it. I mean, I, I feel terrible holding the abbey up on what they're doing, Father Vincent, I'm sorry. It's a beautiful spot, it's, it's a great community asset in my opinion, not to mention your preserves are the best in the world, they don't drink beer. I've heard, I hear your beer and ale is, is good. But, you know, I, I think this is the time to, to take care of this if we can. We've already got a problem because as, as Mr. Tyler said, this wasn't put in one package altogether at one time. If it had, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about this. And, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure who to blame for that, but if that's the way it should have been, that's the way it should have been. And the planning board should have known that, and National Grid should have known it, and whoever the abbey has for engineer should have known that. Somebody should have spoke up other than Mr. Tyler and said, this should be all done at once, make it a package deal, and then you, you slide right down the line. There's no delay. Now, now we're, you know, building this one piece at a time, it's sad.
If, if I understand Evelyn's point, if, if the, say the new poles were, were approved, those, those new poles would be able to carry everything, all the other poles are, are on, on North Spencer Road, right? They're the same height and all, they're...
They're taller.
But they're...
They're taller.
They're, they're stronger higher capacity poles, so the, the replacement poles would be able to handle the line transfer, presumably would be able to handle...
Okay, that was, that's what I'm getting to, is that we're not talking about a, a different kind of pole, that that pole could, could handle that, the transfer.
It's a higher capacity.
Good, you know, that is, you know, there's one possibility if we proceeded with that kind of understanding, but I, I think I'd want, we'd want some time to, to discuss that.
Through, through the chair, but do we have, do we have that time? I'm, I'm not in disagreement with what we're discussing, but now I'm hearing that we've got to communicate to additional customers, determine cost. It's, it appears to be, it would be a separate project.
Yes, it would, it would have a, a timetable.
It could be longer than the three weeks that we're talking, delaying this, that would be, be a concern on the larger, on the larger project.
If, if I can add, we do have easements for all poles up and through, like in property, right? So that would be, so we do have rights to be along Old North Spencer Road. And I just wanted to add that.
Evan has a question, Mr. Chair, Evan?
Yeah, Evan, yes.
Well, the big question is, is Verizon and Charter are not going to move? You may move your electric lines up to your poles, but you're not going to get Verizon and Charter. It would be a big cost for them.
It's a good point, it's not, it's not just involving National Grid, there are other utilities that would have to be involved.
Sure, not at once, all at once.
Well, we might have still had that issue, Steve?
Just for informational purposes, so it, it wasn't National Grid that didn't package it up, it was the developer.
Well, I'm clear on that, Steve, I'm clear on that.
Now, everyone else here is holding the bag and that, the person I'm referring to isn't even here. And, and I may be wrong with regard to the abbey, but I think technically speaking, it's the developers in the solar project, this isn't really costing the abbey money other than the fact that the project's not complete and they're not able to get the pay, the payoff once the project goes into play. So that same thing is affecting the abbey, affecting the town, affecting the Flavins, affecting National Grid.
Steve, who, here with me on this one. I, I have heard a different story than that. That is that the developer wanted to be responsible for running the line down to the Treasure Valley, but that his request to National Grid was not approved. National Grid wanted to handle that themselves. I don't know if National Grid can speak to that, but, but that's what I was told by the developer. And I know, I can remember the, the, you know, he had gone out to search for other people that could install the line to Treasure Valley and had, had subcontractors who could do it, but when he went to National Grid, they said, no, we want to do the work. Now, that's, that's what I heard from the developer and what I've been kind of basing my, my understanding of this, this current situation on that.
I have no knowledge of that statement one or another, so I'm, I completely...
Mr. Shaughnessy? I'll confirm that that's correct. In Massachusetts, in the public way, we do the construction only, no one else. So that would be a correct statement. We don't do the work on, on private property after the demarcation point. The solar developer always does that, so that is the way the process is handled. The developer puts in the solar array all the way up to where our demarcation is, where our outlets are, that control power going in and out of the array, and we handle typically the rest of the construction back to the substation. That's a requirement in Mass, that the franchise utility does have work. So Evelyn, back to your situation, on, on the map, is it starting with pole 122 then, that, that, that's the, the one that will continue to?
Yes, 122, 123, 123.5.
Okay, okay. So you're, going back to your original point, you're, from what I just heard from, from the, from the designer, that they have the easements up, up through pole 121?
That is currently in the process, but it is, it'll be signed, everything past 120, 120 on down, we have easements. 120, 118 on down, I believe. And Eileen Heine is in negotiations for it right now.
So in a, in a best case scenario, or what, what Evelyn was looking for was to have the, was starting at pole 121, then it would cross, cross back over?
Probably 122 because we, that's, 121's not on our property.
I see. Cross over and then...
But if you see the, you see the lot line right after 121...
Yes.
To me, that's almost like a natural course. But, you know, I'm not a designer and I know what we need, I mean, we need electricity to our house, so they would have to figure that out, if that's even a possibility.
We have a...
And if you jumped over this side of the road, you'd still get a back fee, fee hold on.
Well, we, we do have a motion before, so discussion on the, on the motion to delay, pick, continue the hearing to the 12th?
Yeah, I, I, we, we, we as a board, through the chair, we're going to delay this to try to resolve, to get more information, but as we're speaking, there's, there's additional components like Verizon and Charter that we have no, you know, they, they're going to be part of this conversation, and we're, I don't think we're going to have answers that we need in two weeks and, and hearing what Ms. Flavin is saying, though she would appreciate that line going to her house, she doesn't want to stop the project, she wasn't delayed... house, she doesn't want to stop the project. She wants to delay the project.
That's accurate, yeah.
So I...
I'll remove my motion then. I'll remove my motion and ask that National Grid, in good faith, as quick a timetable as you can, look into, you know, Evelyn's request.
And we can formalize that with the town administrator in terms.
It's almost too bad you couldn't come off of pole number 122 on the property of 123. Jump over to 124, too, because you're going to link back up to 125 anyways and tie it in. Just cross over, go down the other side, and that will relieve two poles in our yard. And that's a short distance and at least it'll relieve a couple of the poles.
It would have to, you know, we'd have to take a look at it because...
Because you're not going to get rid of all of them anyways, because you're going to have, because you have the air span from the new poles.
Do you want to build something?
I mean, I know that on my property, when I built my house 15 years ago, my father-in-law worked for the company, I had to give an easement to get a pole in my yard because the span was too long. So the span on that side of the road to the old road is still going to be high enough. You're still going to have to attach to a pole or go underground. Just to clarify. I think I'm right. I'm giving you an answer.
According to the table, they're stringing 190 feet in between poles.
These are on a high pole, okay, because they can go that distance.
Well, it's 160, 160 from 122 to 123. And if you look at the table, it looks like it's about 160 from 123 to 124.
I'm not talking about the length of the pole down the street, Chris. I'm talking if you came off of this side of it, because it's North Spencer Road where it is now, the little one. You stand across property overhead.
This is not my wheelhouse either. I also asked them to do a larger redesign.
Well, again, I think in good faith, and I think that, you know, hopefully they're going to get back and I would hopefully, if you get the gist of this board, you will report to our town administrator what you do find out.
Hi, my name's Javier Morales. I'm a designer for National Grid. Just going along with what Gary's saying, house services are limited to about 85 feet versus mainline construction, which we can push a lot further, up to 150 or 175 feet in some instances. But as Gary pointed out, if it's further than 85 feet, you would still need an intermediary pole, which I would imagine would end up on the right-of-way, and you'd end up with another petition request for that pole. And then from that pole to possibly the house. So we're limited to about 85 feet for house services.
Which is why I have an underground service when I built my house.
It's a smart move.
So I think if we have been...
There was another, was there another question back there?
Flavin could elect to go with an underground service if the property that she's digging through is owned by her and if there's a pole in a public way that she can access. That's another option.
Tony?
I'm pretty much going to say the same thing. It's about 85 to 100 feet from pole to house.
And that's giving, you know...
House layout being over here.
Great changes.
They're going to ask where the house is located.
Now, if there's wetlands in there, yeah, they'll file with...
No wetlands there that I can...
No wetlands there. The house is just, if you're...
Beautiful place.
If you're looking at the T like this with it facing this way, the house is right here. I don't know if you can see that.
So right beyond 123, pole 123?
Yep.
So, I mean, right.
Right that area, there's a barn, and then south of that is the house.
Yeah, I think that, I think that we move forward with this request with the stipulation that we get a report back. And I do want to make sure that you guys do that.
Not a problem. I think we...
Ralph made your motion to...
I think Ralph...
Through that...
I withdrew it. I withdrew it. I will, I can make a motion to approve. Before I do that, you have something to say?
Oh, you can go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'm going to make a motion to approve and request that National Grid look into Evelyn Flavin's request and get back to us through, I got this fly bomb in me here, I'm sorry, and Evelyn Flavin's request and get back to our town administrator by the 12th of September, at least with some preliminary work.
Not a problem.
Okay. Well, that's my motion, and that will hold up the Abbey. They can move ahead. And hopefully, the Flavin's request can be reasonably...
What I would like to add to that is I would like you to get her email address or whatever and keep her informed. I have all her contact information.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Did I need to close a public hearing to take the motion or...
Yeah, we did.
We did.
We opened it.
Yeah, but we didn't have a vote open. He just opened it.
That's public hearing. I just want to say, I think it's, I think it's very, you know, very understanding, very generous on Ms. Flavin's part, you know, to not want to hold back a neighbor like this in a project that's been beset by other challenges. And so I think with that kind of honorable sentiment, I would, you know, I think we owe her and National Grid to, you know, to help identify some options for her and so we can stay on this. I don't want her left in the dust, as she said. I think it's pretty apparent that the need for those transmission lines remains, and we've got other complicating issues regarding other utilities. So it may prove, it may never get to the meeting of the minds, but I do think this deserves an earnest effort. So I, that's really, that goes along with our proposal to approve this plan. Any further discussion? Steve?
If I may, just so we can have the proper records and the Flavin's history. On sheet one of four, there's a little bit of the existing conditions missing. The sheet that you're looking at, you see pole number 124, looks like a dead end and does not enter into the Flavin's property. If you see my sketch, it actually comes into the Flavin's property. And 123 plus 50 should be on there. So if you combine sheets two and three, you can see it's like the top of sheet two is carrying into sheet one, but it's not carried into sheet one at all. And so just so we have, you know, whatever this, whatever plan was approved, it really has these existing lines on it? Do you understand what I'm saying?
That gap at the bottom of the...
The line should go straight through for the existing over the Flavin property.
Yes.
Is it just placed on the Xerox machine incorrectly or just...
It was drawn out in CAD, and they must have hit it under a layer.
Oh, I see.
I'm assuming that's what they had. My CAD guy did.
Okay. All right, that...
Just so that whoever's on my that are writing it has it sent to everybody.
Yeah, we have it on record.
Okay, making note of that.
So, Mr. Chairman, all the men, Dr. Pix's motion to include the amended documentation on the...
I can use that or send it your way through the public panels.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this? I think we've got a lot of time on this. It was... I didn't realize some issues are going to come to bear here, but I think this seems like a fair and appropriate, reasonable resolution. So all those in favor of the motion? Bye.
Bye.
All right, motion approved.
Mr. Chairman, just before we move away, I mean, I have to give some credit to Mr. Shawsey. It's the first time in, we've had our National Grid liaison come to more than two meetings. You've lasted two meetings, so the communication has improved quite a bit from my perspective, being in the early, one of our earlier boards, Gary, and we had real issue with this. So hopefully, it's just going to get better.
Your attendance is duly noted.
And your handling of the second poles is noted as well, so.
And, you know, thanks for bringing in the technical expertise to help, you know, put out some things that might have taken a few more meetings to discover so we can, you know, move this along and, you know, get to some alternatives. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Evelyn.
Can we move to 15 minutes?
A little bit.
The next item on our agenda is presentation by Dan Deniska?
Correct.
Very good, from CMRPC, where we'll be seeking public input on complete streets. It is not a public hearing, but, you know, anyone here, any members of the Parks and Recreation Commission want to comment on complete streets, it gets into some recreational issues, don't read it, you know, for your comments. I'll turn it over to you. Complete streets is not a stranger to us, but it's, so you're going to carry us a little farther down the road, I take it, understanding what's involved. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I think I was here probably about a year ago now, running through the policy that we worked on with Steve. So this is the next step of the program. Just a quick refresher, complete streets, the idea is to create a transportation network that helps all road users, not just automobiles. So you're talking bicyclists, pedestrians, people in wheelchairs, things like that. So it's all about context sensitivity. The policy that we worked through recognizes the character of the town. It's not, all streets can look the same. When it's all said and done, certain streets will look certain ways. You have certain parts of town that are more rural in nature. It will reflect that. So I'll just go through a quick recap of the tiers. Tier one was what we worked on last summer, which was the policy development that was passed. Steve attended a Mast dot training, which opened it up to being submitted to the Mast portal for scoring, but received a score of 83, I believe.
It was an 83 before bonus points?
Before bonus points. So as long as you get above an 80, you're cleared to move on to tier two, which is why we're here tonight, which is a prioritization plan. And it's a process where the town contracted with CMRPC to go out and work through different projects that will go onto this template that will be submitted to Mast dot. It's not scored, but it's just reviewed. And then tier two moves into tier three. Oh, I'm sorry. This is just a quick review. You had a policy above 80, request for technical assistance to develop the plan. So tier three is taking the projects that are developed in the phase of the project that we're in now, and you're eligible for up to $400,000 to construct a project. That money will function basically like Chapter 90. It's not as onerous as a tip project that will go through our MPO process. And that can, it doesn't have to be the project that's listed as number one on the plan when it's all said and done. If it makes sense that number nine on the list is what works at that moment, it plays off of another project you're working on, that's fine. They don't have to go in order. So what we've done until this point is we've gone out and done some field data collection at the end of July, beginning of August. There was four of us out in yellow vests, walking around, and we cataloged all of the sidewalks in the downtown area and graded them on a scale from excellent to poor. So excellent, good, fair, and poor, depending on conditions and their connectivity. We also graded ADA ramps and noted the location of crosswalks if they were in a place where it made sense or if they were missing where they would have made sense. We use the Spencer Sidewalk Betterment Plan as our baseline, and what the process that we're in now is analyzing everything we collect in the field with safety data that we get from the state every three years, automobile crashes, bike and ped crash data. And then we look at shoulder width for bike accommodation and then noting open space, rec, and school-town properties for connectivity issues. So where we'll be working over the next few weeks, I'm going to meet with Steve later this week to kind of develop a draft list, go through that, put rough estimates to numbers, and start fleshing out that project. So tonight was really just a quick update for you, request for any feedback if you had any at this point. Just to give you an idea of projects that could come out of it, it could be striping projects, it could be new sidewalk, sidewalk repair, extension, could be extensions of the rail trail or addition of bike lanes, that type of thing, centered around downtown and then fanning out to other towns where regional connections make sense. So as I mentioned, looking for any feedback if possible tonight. We have a map here of the, it's not very legible for you. Apologize for that. The sidewalk betterment program. I also have two large-scale maps in the back that you can take a look at at your convenience. It has all of our field data collection and a large-scale map of the town sidewalk betterment program.
Through the chair, the one question I have is, we signed off on this initiative. Does it have any, could it have any adverse effect on any tips, tip projects, or would it alter tip requests or...
It wouldn't have an adverse effect, only a potentially positive effect.
Okay.
The tip project would require these type of improvements.
Okay.
Or a waiver. It would not have an adverse effect.
And would it affect current pipeline tip requests?
No, it would not at all, and it's consistent with what we've been trying to do since I've been here. And that was one of the reasons why we had the sidewalk betterment plan that we brought forward to begin with. I think that might have been when you were, just before you were on the board, but like, it was within my...
First year, I think, was when...
It's too bad that that plan isn't legible, because it really looks good over here. Yeah. I don't know what that is, if it's our projector or not. But we did highlight, you know, the areas that we wanted to focus on, and that's what these type of things are helping us with our tip program, our tip project.
I just asked the question because everything, see, we have things going on all over, and I just want to integrate it and make sure we don't get bitten in any possible way with projects that we have going on now. So it's good, it sounds awesome, but it's not going to affect anything, so.
Cool, good. Following up on Tony's asking, though, I, just to be clear, if we have a plan, a complete streets plan, take Meadow, for example, and we, and we get, would we be applying for implementing that plan through a tip? Would it be a separate request? You'd want to do it all at the same time, right? If you're improving the road, you'd want to improve the sidewalk and everything else. So that's why, if I got what Tony was saying, would, does it slow down or does it make it a bigger request that we end up making in the end?
It does not. It actually opens up other opportunities. Meadow Road still would be a separate, you know, we could try to combine the two together, but we would prefer to try to get that one as a separate tip project without these monies. And then we take, use these monies and look at other areas.
On Meadows?
Where we wouldn't be able to use tip money. For example, like, one of our priority sidewalk areas are Ash Street, where we have a connection to the school. So we know we have issues there. We have the covert and the hill and a little bit of blind spot, a lot of children walking there. And then we identified some Main Street gaps, like the gap over near School Street, where there's a bit of a sidewalk missing. And then there's some gaps over on the Westley side of town on that section of Main Street. And it also helps us in those cases, because that's a mass DOT-owned section of road. So when they come in and do their project, we would say, when you do this project, you need to include these sidewalks, because that's the direction we're going in. So it actually opens up other opportunities for us, and that's why we started going down this road.
I apologize. I should have mentioned that the tier three funding can be used on local roads that, like Steve said, would not normally be eligible for the MPO process.
Great, okay. So it's, we're now at beginning, we would be undertaking tier two as we...
The tier two is the development of the prioritization plan. And like Dan indicated, we're kind of working and starting off with the betterment plan, but it does require that public process, where you get public input to see what other concerns other people might, that we haven't thought of, that our residents have, and hear if they have some other suggestions with regards to some of those priorities.
And at that point, you'll have, through the chair, sorry, you'll have the specific areas that we're looking to improve on?
Yeah, the main goal for the project is the Excel sheet that is the template. We'll prepare a narrative to go along with it and some maps. So it'll have more of a story, if you will, woven in with, so it's just not an Excel sheet. It'll explain how we got there and why these areas have been looked at.
Great. Okay, let's, it's, we'll have to keep it moving and see some opportunities coming up. We'll look into taking it to that next stage where we ask, actually ask for assistance. assistance to develop that plan, and, and this is not the same as engineering specs, though, Steve, that would...
It is not, it's just an outline of, of what the town sees moving forward. And what it does is it, it gives you a list of potential projects, some form of prioritization, and that's what you need to, when you're ready to move forward with the project, meaning apply for the funding to tier three, you need to have had developed that plan, so that there's some type of, so that the state sees it as a logical project as to why you got to where you were, and why you're looking to fund that project. Like Dan said, it doesn't need to be your top priority project, but where is it and why, was it part of the public process?
Right.
And is it eligible for these funds?
Okay.
And through the MPO, we also have a TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program, Funding Pot, which is for smaller projects like this. So say you were, say the Main Street project gets finished and you want to fill in the sidewalk gap, this will help you score well for trying to make it onto that list moving forward.
I think it makes a compelling argument, given where we're at with our infrastructure improvements. I think we, we can make a strong argument with a lot of these areas that need improvement on, since we've, we've gone ahead with a large-scale infrastructure project that this integrates in with nice, it's come around, it's, this came along at the perfect time.
This comes to us, or is this, are these funds managed by CMRPC, or what is, what is the, what is the channel for this?
For the, the construction?
For the, for the money for some of those gap projects and all, is that?
The, the construction funding would go right to the town, kind of, like chapter ninety functions now.
CMR, and on this project, CMRPC is actually our consultant.
Right.
We, we could, and we got a grant for their services, they're actually being paid for out of a tier-two grant.
Okay.
We could have went and spoken to a consultant for those services, we have a good working relationship with CMRPC, they helped us get to this point, they helped us do the complete streets policy to begin with. And you know how closely I work with CMRPC, and, you know, I wanted to also take this opportunity where they could build their resume up, and they can help other communities in, in, in our region to try to do the same thing. So I, I think CMRPC was a great choice for us on this.
So it's tier-two funding that brings Dan to us?
At the end of the day, the funding would come to us like chapter ninety does. We would get an eligible project, we wouldn't get it, and we would get an eligible project, we would put it out the bid, we would pay the bills, and then we would get reimbursed for those bills from the state. Similar, that's the same way a chapter ninety project works.
Okay.
I hope we build your resume up and get some wins on this, so.
We appreciate it. Spencer's the first town in our region to do it, so you should be applauded as well. We thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. We'll keep this all moving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome. And Steve, thanks for all you do, you're really on top of things, I'm impressed.
Yeah, smile, Steve, it's all good. Smile for the camera.
We try to build the bridges to where the needs.
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Take care.
Thank you. I'm done, right?
Yeah, so you hang around for Parks and Rec?
Unless your ears ring later on.
Yeah, in case they start badmouthing you for parks.
Just wanted you to know.
Do you want us to take a, a brief break, Gary? No, you all say, okay.
It's Gary's world.
Yeah, you've been patient, come on up.
You guys want to come forward?
Apologize for making you wait, guys.
Sorry, didn't realize we're going to get so complicated with our poll hearing.
Yeah.
Let me just sit here alone.
No, everybody comes up here and...
All right. So...
Just, let me just introduce for the purpose of the camera, that we have members of the Parks and Rec Commission here with us tonight, been looking forward to an opportunity to have them come before the select board, not, not to report to us, but to share with the public, you know, what the, you know, what the, what plans they have, what's going on with Parks and Rec right now. Everybody's aware of Luther Hill, having been closed for a few summers, you know, the cutbacks we've seen in that area of the town budget. So it's important for people to know that it's not for lack of activity on, on, on the part of the commission, or for their, their attempts to, to move it along. I've, I've been the liaisons since, since, since the spring, and, and I'm really impressed with the kind of work they put into it, they've walked the, the parks and looked at vandalized gates, and, and, you know, with all the challenges they face. So it's a good opportunity to let the public know what Parks and Rec is up to, and also look ahead to the future, because they're certainly not content to sit on the parks as they are now. So let you introduce your, your commission.
All right. Secretary Corinne Kennedy.
Tony Scannell. And Marty, Marty German. Missing tonight is Mark Lammy, Bill Schemuth, and Lynn Peretti. We're an all-volunteer group, so I'm going to make this quick and brief. I can start off with our parks if you want, I can go down the list of what we have, what we're looking at. So Powder Mill, our busiest park we've got. One thing new we did this year, getting a grant from the Cultural Commission, we were able to have summer concerts down there. First thing we've ever done, Town of Spencer, with a lot of help from the group. Also, outside groups helped us, the Fire Department list usually assigned, to promote it, it's on the billboards in town, so we've been lucky there. It's getting there, we were going to go again for another grant last year, oh, next year, and try it again. So I'm getting praises back for it, I know the selectmen have been there, we've been there, so it's little steps. Powder Mill's also used for yoga group. Corinne's working on right now with, if you want to explain what you're working with that group, get the repairs done.
Oh, so we're working with Little Tykes, there's a couple of damaged spots at Powder Mill. The most concerning part is the little kids' area, there's a railing that's missing there, so we're looking on engineering something to make it like a ramp, so that way the little kids, especially toddlers, can be able to get up and down on it. Unfortunately, with that one, we can't replace the railing, because that model is discontinued. But we also have, we just got a whole big list back from Little Tykes on repairs to make the sail of the pirate ship to replace that, because that's missing, that's been missing for a few years. There's a globe of the world that's supposed to be down in the front part of the ship that's missing as well, and then there's another, like toggle, where they, the little kids, like, pull it over and it makes all the little gears move. That got melted or burned from vandalism, unfortunately. So in that case alone, just to replace that panel is about seven thousand dollars, so. So from the outside, it looks great, Powder Mill, but there are little missing links to the whole playground, so.
You have a question, please, through the chair? Do you have electricity down there?
Yes. That's how we're running the concerts down there. We're putting, we're having the concerts here, because we have electricity.
You got a pole, pole, a camera could be put on, maybe?
Well, that's part of the thing I want to talk about.
Oh, okay, because I think that might help. The, the vandalism.
It's not just there. So, working with the Fire Department Association, they raised about four thousand dollars.
Four thousand dollars, a couple of years ago, with the plan, so they are going to help us in getting some of the repairs done for Powder Mill, because it is our busiest, and it's the one that the kids go to the most, their families.
So Corinne ran that through the Fire Association, so their partner up was helping us there. They also, there was originally some money we were going to use when Luther Hill was hoping to put a bigger playground up there. So we changed it to equipment for parks and recs, and they've been very helpful with that. So it's very much used, we do need some maintenance down there, some repairs and things like that. Marty's been doing a lot of that on his own, on his own time, the benches wear out, things like that. They said we're just a volunteer group. So getting to Ogara, this year we worked with everybody with the agreements, we brought in like, the football, youth football, and really expressed that concern about them using the field. We put about ten thousand dollars into that field for money we've had in the past, and it's really looking nice. The track, the field, those are looking nice, and we want to maintain it. By meeting with the groups, they're all ready to give something back to us. Football especially, they're going to, they don't have goalposts down there, so they can't have the big games down there, but they do their practices there, because it's got lights. They're going to have the Little Tykes games down there to bring people, the public in to see the parks, that was one of our requests. Also help us with seating, and help us with, all groups with doing maintenance down there, and clean, a cleanup day and some repairs. Tony runs that park. We broke up the parks with all of us, and he takes care of that park. Biggest problem with Ogara, a lot of the vandalism. We've caught, the police are working with us, they've caught kids down there spray painting the buildings.
Burning.
Burning, yep, trying to burn down the grandstand, we don't know if it's the oldest grand, one of the oldest grandstands, we think, in the country.
It's second oldest.
Yeah. We get people there inside the grandstands at all hours of night and day, football's going up there.
We have, as we speak, people living there.
Homeless people?
We don't know what they are, but groups that use the field will get there in the morning and find people sleeping in the grandstands, tents behind the grandstands, and...
Don't like homeless people to make.
Well, the police have given trespass notices to people, and a week later, somebody else will be down there. We've had people living in the buildings before.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
And it's ju, it's destroyed. Every time we fix one thing, five other things break the next day.
The biggest problem, you can come in from Ogara, we had the fence fixed by Morrison Fence, volunteered, fixed the fence for nothing, they took the fence back down.
Within a week.
Under rail.
Yeah, they come in from the rail trail. I've met with Chief Darren once, talked to him on the phone, talked to the sergeants, they are patrolling up there. Problem is, you can hear the cruisers coming up the road.
Sure you can.
You can see the headlights, they're coming through the rail trail trying to catch them, but that's a distance for an officer to walk, we only got a few officers on, so they are working on something. But we need, this is going to bring up, all these parks, camera systems. I know this work, maybe doing something with the whole town, which probably should be, do it right and do it once, but as John was down there the other day, and I talked to Adam about, someone either tried crashing through the gate, backing into the gate, they're doing something with the ga, gates all bad.
Couple times.
A couple times, there's a couple, there's old damage. If they get onto that field and tear it up, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, because irrigation in there, they maintain for nothing. They go down, they do the repairs, well, for these gentlemen down there, you know...
Blow it out in the fall, get it going in the spring.
Well, it's hard to keep a field up, I know.
Yeah. You know, Steve's wonderful with us, and you call him up, we need something, he helps us. He's short-staffed, so we don't have the, you know, the manpower down there, to be down there, the full-time people down there all the time cleaning up. The front of it used to be able, he, when he had full staff, was, they mulch it, make it look good. It doesn't get that now, he doesn't have the manpower to do it, and we don't have the money to buy the stuff.
And I can't keep up with overgrowth on the fence, and it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot more for us to do, so.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, Rob, we had discussed the last capital go-around about the security cameras, is, I don't know how deep you got into the technology, were they suitable for what you needed, or, we also, the library was putting some in, and we thought maybe we'd get a better price if we went with the ones the library had, if you remember that conversation?
Yeah, I talked, yeah, I talked, we've gotten help up at Proudey Park, Paul, the town electrician, and him and I had a brief conversation about it. Also, Tony does that stuff, we got to bring internet down there, maybe just to get something started, we can videotape it, check the tapes, come up with something there for now. It's a bigger project than what I could handle, is trying to get the...
Well, we had gotten a quote from ADT.
Yeah.
A few years ago, and it was for three of our parks, it was for Luther Hill, Powder Mill, and Ogara. And it was going to go directly to the police station, to its own monitor, but funding kind of went away, but I know the, we were funded for five thousand, I think, for security this year, and it got taken away.
Yeah, there was some money towards some of that stuff.
She was through the chair.
So I know it got approved, but it got taken away.
How, how much was your quote for, I didn't quite get it? The quote from ADT, do you recall?
It was probably for all three parks, like, forty thousand?
Forty thousand?
Yeah.
And then the ma, how expensive is the maintenance fee after that?
I don't think there is a maintenance fee, it was directly to the police department.
Okay. I, 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 I put a similar system in at the John Arbriek School in Ashborough, when I was superintendent of schools there, and it's great. I mean, it's, they've got the, they've got the monitor right there, it's right near the dispatcher, she glances out from time to time if something looks different, she knows what to do.
No, I'm the town electrician for Auburn, and they have two monitors in the station that does every school in town, every park in town, every public park has at least fifteen cameras.
It's a great idea, and I, I, I'd like to be able to support it, I'd like to support it, you know, in one way or the other, I don't know if we're going to need a small override, or we can find the money somewhere, but...
This is all fiber optic, and I don't, I don't know if we have fiber optic.
Here is no fiber optic.
In town, no?
No.
Yeah, but it could be, it could be run on regular cable, I mean, the question is the resolution. You want to have resolution so that if I'm, if you're looking at the camera, and I'm the guy who is vandalizing the park, and you know me, oh, that's Ralph Hicks.
Well, we would think...
Or the police know me, and they know who to pick up.
Yeah.
Not that I'm going to do that, but you know what I mean. A lot of the cameras they sell you, like the ones up at Wire Village, when I was superintendent there, we had a couple of Evel Knievels on motorbikes, and they went right up to the front door, you know, Wire Village School, a little steps there, and caught right on camera and everything, rev, rev the bikes up, okay? He, one kid, I hope I'm not giving anybody any ideas here, but he took his gas tank, took the cap off and did this, right? And lit a match, and then, I mean, he's lucky the bike went when it did, because he'd have been fried for sure. And when we looked at the resolution on the cameras, we couldn't make out who it was. And for sure, it was somebody in town, so the odds were pretty good, somebody within the school district would have been able to recognize who those two kids were. And like I said, they're just lucky they didn't kill themselves. I mean, so it's got to be enough resolution so you can recognize the face, otherwise don't even bother, because you, you got to be able to catch them.
You need a ten ADP system, which is expensive.
Well, that's, yeah, whatever, whatever you need, I don't know the numbers like you do, but you need something where you can recognize. Now, it knocks trail when the kid took the camera down, it wasn't too bad, because he looked right into, he didn't realize that was, you know, on a hard drive, he thought it was a tape in there, right? He took it down, the police knew right who he was, and we got him to pay restitution and all that good stuff. Yeah, well, let's, let's let, Rob, continue. I just wanted to make sure that... Spec out, spec out those needs, the town.
I'm not picking on you, Steve.
I'm not here.
And this probably isn't your fault, but we have asked for several years for security lighting on the poles, one at Powder Mill and two down at Ogara, and I don't know, you said you knew someone at Paxton Light, you were going to talk to them? I don't know if anything...
Same problems we have, I think, I've asked twice, and I follow up, last time you and I talked about it, and, and I actually say, wasn't thinking about your lighting, but we have like an LED lighting project that, it, yeah, some, one of those things where you think you've talked to someone and it started, you always have to go back and revisit, but you, it's hard, you know how it goes.
It's really getting important now.
Yeah, but yeah, besides getting, catching these guys on camera, these people are doing it in the cloak of darkness, you know?
That's why we need...
But the security light, you're talking with motion?
No, it's street lighting.
Okay.
Slide up some more.
One, one on a pole facing Powder Mill into the park, one in the driveway into Ogara, and one at the main gate facing down.
Facing down.
At the gate. Because you know, if there's lights there, security lighting, the police are more likely to come down there and at least drive through, take a look.
Well, the need is clearly established.
Right. And working with the groups down there now, we've got a really good relationship, like Tony talks to them all the time, they're taking pride into it, too. I mean, even our meetings, and they're calling me, they're calling Tony, telling us...
The park is used eighty percent of the year.
Right, it's a very popular park, even people don't think it is.
Day and night.
And, you know, they're taking on more, you know, calling us up, hey, it's a problem, call the police, please. And they do, they call the police, they say something to people, we've got people watching it, that, you know, the gentleman does the dogs down there, always reports to me, sees something wrong. So that's one of our positives we're getting.
People on the rail trail throwing rocks at me when I'm cutting the grass, so it's pretty bad.
Yeah.
And I, he actually called in the fire that was down there, you know, the K-9 trainer, they had, someone lit a bunch of logs on fire right behind the grandstand, right?
So... So.
It's all torched in that area too. Like you can tell that there was a big bomb fire.
We've been, yeah, we've been up there for, I've been, I'm on the fire department, I've been up there for calls before, brush fires behind it and stuff like that. It's the access from the rail trailer. So, you know, like I said, we're working more with partners we have down there and trying to improve things down there, what we can do. The rest is above us. It's, you know, money and things like that, we don't have. Luther Hill, I'm going to Luther Hill. We, we are exploring through Adam, through town. Partnerships with possibly with shared recreational programs. Something we came up in our meeting one day. You know, there's towns around us that, in the same boat we are. You know, just like regionalizing what other departments are doing, you know, and helping with resources. So that's being looked into. Possibly sharing staff and things like that. With that being said, we don't know if someday the money will come back and open up Luther Hill. We are putting some of our, um, we have money in Luther Hill's account, trust fund. And we're using some of the money to remove the dangerous trees. Steve's a big help with that. He comes down, he gave us a, he went through Luther Hill with Evan and they gave us what needs to be done, what the dangerous things are. Those are the ones in the roadway.
Yes.
So we, we did work with a gentleman for the amount of money we had. He's doing what he can do with that amount of money. And he's removing some of the trees and that work's getting done. So people are asking why you're working on closed park. It's closed to a point. The beach is closed, but people can still walk through there. So we need to maintain some of it. Marty's down there constantly. One of the problems is trash. People go down there, they dump their trash. They don't pick up their dog litter and things like that. So we're trying to get that caught up. Freya leaving a barrel down there, we've been talking with Steve, I agree, we leave a barrel down there, someone's gonna bring their trash and put their barrel, trash in there, of their own stuff, so. The docks, the two docks, I know there was talk about the two docks that are gone. They were falling apart. They've been welded in the past and they were unsafe. They were breaking the chains. We chained them up and they were dragging them out onto the pond. So we have to get the fire department to come up with the boat, drag them back off the pond. So those have been gotten rid of. And if we open the park, we're gonna need to replace those two rails. But Marty keeps up on that park, keeps an eye on it. So we, if we say in the spring we got money to open a park, we can run on that. Talk using our, our donation account to run the park. We don't prefer that, we do not prefer that at all. That would only be a one-time solution. Use up all our donation account money and then it's closing next year. And that wouldn't work either. So like I said, there is something going on, working with a partnership with other community, maybe to open in the park and sharing it. Sharing their resources, what we need to do. So that's in the works. And as we get more, you know, that gets a little more ground to it, then we can announce what's going on. Anything on Luther Hill done? So Proudey Park, everybody's seen what's going on with there. We partnered with Exchange Club, took care of that. Got a grant, a lot of work's gone up there and that's a lot of volunteer with the exchange program. Steve's on that committee with myself. It's looking great. And it's, it's really an inspiration to the group to partner with somebody to keep these parks going. Cause the town can't afford it and we can't do it alone. And it's a long process, but it's really looking nice up there. And that's Exchange Club and the group that was part of it, the committee. It really is nice, so. That should be done soon. That's still being worked on. At no cost to the town. There was talk of the nine eleven statues going up that did come out of a trust fund. That is for that park only. That trust funds were started when they opened the park. So use some of that money to put that nine eleven monument up there. That came out of the trust fund. That is there in case we do need to do repairs or anything at the park. So a lot of trees removed, the thirteen trees, the original trees are still there. They've been maintained, cabled, trimmed. Preserving the roots and everything. So it's, a lot of work's gone into that. Uh, let's see, what else we got? We got Bemis Park and Warren, Ralph Warren Park. I know, um, this year Steve's done some work up there for us. Up at Ralph Warren, Bemis Park is just maintained. It's nothing we, except painting the guns and things like that once in a while.
Not much up there.
No, there's not much up there. It's not a lot of land. So, um, the rail trail through grants and thanks to the conservation committee and the snowbirds and Steve's on that committee also.
If I may, you mean Spencer Highway Department?
Yeah, Evan, I didn't see Evan. If it wasn't for those guys helping us with that, that wouldn't get done. They're a huge part of that, getting that done. A lot of means and they've done a lot of work with that. That's all kudos on them. That's really coming out nice. I mean, Steve's handling all that, talking with contractors and all that. The same thing with Proudey Park, he was helping us with that, talking to contractors. And Evan taking care of stuff for us too, so. If they get help, that means we get help, cause we can't do it. I mean, they are the parks and wrecks. They're the ones that go out at the mobile lines and clean up the messes and the brush and stuff. If they don't have the help to do it. Either we fix the road or we, but we like, like, what O'Gara looks like now is the front of it needs to be all redone again and the weeds and everything like that. He goes down and mows it on his own time. Maintains the stuff down there, what he can do. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to find ways and means of trying to save money and get this done, but in the long run, it's money that gets it all done.
Through the chair, I think Rob touched on something. I think, you know, we've, we've got to find a way to get back on track on some of these parks and but it's gotta be worked into our budget. You can't, you can't open it up once and then pull the, pull the plug on the next year. This is gonna be an ongoing interest. We've gotta get these things back open to operate year, yeah. They gotta, they gotta be incorporated in the budget. Now, in the last cycle, uh, through Rob's presentations, we, we, we prioritized your request pretty high last year, but still the plug was pulled on most Capitol requests anyway. So we're trying, we're trying. But yeah, we're gonna find a way to get, get these things, uh, in there perpetually in, in, in budgets. I do have a question. Have you guys heard anything about any differentiation between opening up Luther? And, you know, to most people, opening up Luther is opening up the swimming programs and, but, I mean, other people knows that we just had the chain up and you're not supposed to go through there. Has anyone talked to anybody about, you know, why can't we just go through the park or?
People can walk through the park?
They did, but they had to go around the, the chain.
They had to go around the park.
So we're, we're not giving them the impression that they could do that, you know, it's, uh.
Well, it is closed.
I believe the swimmers, cause I live straight across the street, uh, across the way and I can see the beach. Hot days, there's twenty, twenty-five people swimming.
There are no lifeguards.
Yeah, that, that was, that was something we just got a little nervous about. It was, when we first did this, it was a time where kids were drowning left and right in quarries in, in the areas. We just thought it was the, the best direction for us at the time, not the, you know.
Well, they know they're swimming at their own risk. So I mean, it's not something that's not noticed at all, but people are taking the time, they're walking their dogs down there. They stopped making fires across in there because I was going over across with my boat, just asking nicely to put the fire out and the kids would go away. So we don't have to get the police involved with that stuff.
And the skate park up there is used.
It's used quite a bit.
Kids are up there all the time. Every Sunday, there's probably twenty kids by eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock.
And the church used to maintain the volleyball court, but I don't know if.
They, they're, they're still playing. They put a new net up, they put some sand in there again.
And I see parents bringing their kids up to use the skateboard park and I sit there and watch music. The reason the gates close, we do not want cars down in there doing any more damage to it. You know, it's, it would be good to have cars in there and stuff like that, being, I think, a lot more problems. Police have keys to it, fire department's keys, highways have keys. We have keys to get down there if we need to, but uh, we, we don't want the gate and the police department don't want the gate open. It's just attracting more.
Oh, sure.
More people down there.
And the people that live on Lake Whitmore, um, they'll call me if they need to put the boat in and we charge them twenty-five dollars to put the boat in and twenty-five dollars to take the boat out. And that goes right to Luther Hill Park. So I mean, cause there is no boat access. On, uh, Lake Whitmore, other than that access.
That is a donation, is it correct, Marty?
Yes, yes.
It was a donation account and we can use that for certain things.
Not the Marty Fund.
Yeah, not the Marty. You know, like the, the swim lessons, the Abbey donates the money for the swimming lessons. The town pays for the lifeguards and the director of the lifeguards. You have to have that. Lynn's been helping us out when we used to have that open, where duties here, where her hours cutting things, I don't. Someone needs to take control of that, to do that stuff. Cause someone's gotta be daily constant, talking to them, things like that. I, I know.
They gotta hire them and set their schedules. I, I watched when this was in process, what was entailed, what. It's, it's, uh, you not only hired lifeguards, you hired a summer manager.
Correct.
To do that program. So that's what, that's what you need and if we could find a way to do that in a creative fashion, you know, get that position in there. It's important to do it the right way.
Right, and you gotta have safety and things like that. And it's gonna be parking attendants. If we partner with another town, it's gonna be rules who comes in. It's not open to out-of-town right now, or when it was open. There's a reason for that. It's town residents only. I think that's the way the town prefers it to be. We partner with another town, of course, it'll be.
Mr. Chairman? I, I don't wanna interrupt you, Rob. Finish what you're saying. I, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No, it's, if this works out, if we can get another town to regionalize, that'd be awesome for us.
I, I wanna commend you guys for looking into that. I mean, if it could be a shared cost. You know, if you need fifty thousand dollars, well, suddenly you only need twenty-five if there's another town involved. I think it's big enough, the beach down there is big enough to handle two towns. When I was a kid, I mean, there used to be someone up on Lake Street at, at the entrance, collecting money from out-of-towners. And you got a sticker for your car if you were a town resident. Sorry, we call it one on your mirror. You know, that's right, should be seen through your windshield.
We did away with those.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm, I'm, I'm not complaining.
Well, there were too many complaints.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I think if you limit it to town residents and another town, if we, we partner with them, it's a great idea. And that would allow us to get back the swimming lessons, which you said the Abbey is gracious enough to, to fund.
Also Paul Bouvier, who's been trying to run the fund, trying to get the park back. I mentioned him, he's been working hard trying to do it too. But like I said, volunteer money is great to do extra.
You can't count up the daily operating expenses. You can't, you absolutely can't, Rob. I just feel very badly that our kids in town don't have swimming lessons. My children took advantage of it. And I, I think it's, i- it's, it's a great program and that we've lost. And there are a lot of things that have lost, been lost over the years in Spencer. You know, because we just don't have the money and frankly, because our tax rate is one of the lowest in, in, in the whole state. And you can't get by with a two and a half percent increase and maintain everything that you have. So it's like, I, I liken it to we're burning our furniture, you know, to keep the house warm. Someday, if it keeps, we're gonna run out, we're gonna run out of furniture to burn. And the core, the core services, like the highway department, the police, okay, fire is mostly volunteer, so I can't say fire. But your police and your highway, you know, and your, the town hall's already been decimated down to three days a week with no nights. You know, what's gonna be cut next? I mean, at some point, people in town have to understand that, you know, being, you know, in, in the lowest fifteen percent of all tax, tax brackets in, in the state, there's a price to be paid. And the price is, the park is deteriorating, the children do not have swimming lessons, you aren't able to maintain O'Gara and the other parks the way that they need to be. And on and on and on. And there are other things that need to be done. The town hall needs to be reopened four days a week. We need to have at least one night a week. A library needs to be restored to where it was and I, I don't know how we're gonna do it all. I don't know how we're gonna do it all, but um, you guys are definitely a priority in my book, uh, cause primarily because of the swimming lessons. I feel terrible that our children don't have swimming lessons in Spencer.
Could we take a look at the swimming lessons for a minute? Cause you talked about the, the, you know, structuring the expenses for a, a summer program. The, um, were we not charging enough for lessons? I mean, we were.
The Abbey was donating money to help.
Supplement?
Right, supplement.
Okay.
You know? That was done way before. I mean, that was their donation to the town to help, you know, bring the cost down for families who can afford it.
Yes, it's gotta be affordable.
You gotta make it affordable. Cause extra above and beyond is the regular lifeguards being there. This is extra people being there to do that, cause you can't take away from the lifeguards. On that subject, without having highway helping, fully manned, help us out. Opening it up is gonna make it tough for them and tough for us, cause we don't have time to go down there.
I, I can help. On the other issue, you asked a good question. Families in, in this, our town, um, we were competitive with the rest of towns when we were opened up. It wasn't, we weren't any more or any less, we were competitive with the rest of the towns. I mean, it wasn't a matter of having enough kids, cause we had enough kids. Just a matter of paying for the people to initiate, to have these programs work. Even if we went one, one step further, two towns, three towns, four towns, they're still out-of-towners, but they're still, they're gonna help us pay for something that's functional. That would be only my recommendation because, um, at forty dollars a, a kid for six weeks or thirty dollars a kid. I don't remember what the exact numbers were, but that, we were competitive. And we had enough kids to, uh, run the programs.
It was a complete summer program. My kids went through it for years. It was, it went beyond, it went beyond just going down and swimming. They, they had programs during the day to go do things at various locations. It was really pretty neat, you know, they'd go to David Proudey one day and do a project and go back and swim later in the afternoon. And it was, I don't remember the exact number, but it wasn't something that broke, broke the budget.
No, but I mean, plus two is if it rained, they showed movies inside.
Yep, was it Summer Adventure?
Summer Adventure.
That's right.
Yeah, they used Lake Street. Well, now there's no more Lake Street.
Yeah, yeah.
The big thing too is that if you send your kids, you know, if you have two working family members and, you know, you have to send your kids somewhere for summer camp or swim lessons, you're going, you know, probably to Worcester, the YMCA or you're in, you know, Southbridge. And for one week of camp for a elementary school kid in the YMCA program is two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, and they get swim lessons there, but that's only a week, you know, and to be able to open up and maybe partnership with another town to get, you know, something going and then hopefully build off of that is definitely gonna benefit our community.
The, the other thing I'd like you to, just to talk about briefly, Rob, I know it's, uh, it's, you know, it's something you're planning, but you, you were going to in, invite the public in to talk about Luther Hill, you know, some, someday this, you know, some evening this, this fall, just to get some public input and, and to, again, to be a little more creative, identify some partners who could, you know, help carry the, the Luther Hill forward and.
Yeah, one of our ideas before this, um, idea was coming up with, um, regionalizing. It's still something we wanna do. We talked about in our meeting is, um, having maybe an open meeting, a workshop. Bringing people, you know, wanna be involved in ideas of what we can do, like do Luther Hill, then do O'Gara. Cause there's certain groups that want O'Gara, certain groups that, that want Luther Hill. Maybe get some ideas, maybe get some businesses involved, bring in, you know, you never know, you might hit the right person and be able to help out that's got some kind of resource or somewhat way to bring in financial. But, and we're, our group is for the kids. Uh, we sat, when we sat with the Raiders this year, we really didn't wanna, we wanted to stop using the park for one year. And they came to us and they have no place else at night, they can do it. So we worked with them. You know, we partnered with them, we worked with them and stuff like that, cause we don't wanna take anything away from the kids. We just wanted to rest the field, cause so much work went into getting that field done.
Yeah, they have over two hundred kids, I think they said.
Yeah, so they wouldn't have a place at night and when you start hitting the fall, night comes quick. And without the lights. We just spent twenty-seven hundred dollars on one light, one pole to get fixed. And that was our budget. We're done. We gotta see Adam if we have any more problems. No, so we're trying to work with the groups, cause we definitely wanna keep the kids involved. More kids are involved in town.
For the groups? Is there a fee structure for the groups? Like if you wanna use a, say, O'Gara for the AYF for the Raiders?
Yeah.
Five thousand dollars, you know, is, is there some type of?
They would never be able to afford that.
Yeah, but they donate.
Three hundred dollars a kid, Tony. My kid played there. And that's two hundred kids. That's a lot of money coming in.
They broke down everything to us.
Exactly.
What did they make? About twenty-something dollars a kid?
Twenty-two fifty a kid, by the time they got done.
And they agreed to give us, uh, what, a thousand dollars?
Yeah, nine, nine hundred dollars upfront for seed.
Right.
And that was our agreement. They pay us upfront for seed till we make sure we have the seed.
They pay the light bill.
Right.
Softball donated hours of labor.
Labor.
We did the infield's over. Uh, all we did was buy the sand, buy the infield mix, drop it off, they spread it. They lasered everything. They repainted the grandstands. We, we bought the paint. They put gutters up, they repaired the backs.
The back fence, yeah.
Fencing on the backstop. So the women softball, they they help just as much, even though they're much smaller. The the dog, dog guy, he donates five hundred bucks.
Yeah, every year, so they do help us out, so.
There's no fee.
Right.
Because we waive that for volunteer hours, basically.
And I would just point out that even when you have volunteers, they've gotta be coordinated.
Correct.
And that and that takes time, it's not as if.
We're gonna do a volunteer day down there and see and make sure we're getting, we get the right projects done. So that's how we, we just sat with them, and it was a long, long process with them, it was a couple meetings, talking with them and. Phone discussions, back and forth with Tony and them, and calling me, and, you know, a lot. So we wanna work with them, it's a kids group.
Can't chase the kids out of this town.
No, no.
Chase them out of town, then.
Your priorities are right.
Well, there's there's no taxes for them, and they won't buy houses here and so forth, it's evolution.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're, you've gotta just maintain what we have, and keep what we have, and preserve what we have. And that includes the programs, and and anyway we can, the parks in the in the condition that they have to be in. I mean, Nirvana, it would be to make money as we as we have these programs, but, you know, that's. That's way down the road.
We think breaking even.
Breaking even.
We're doing the same thing with other areas of the town too, it's, you know, you know, you know, we'd love to charge what we. What the going rate for a square foot of Sogdum block is, but let's fill it, at least not end up, you know, losing money on it. And we're doing that in a lot of areas, I think you guys are going in the right direction.
Tomorrow, wood chips, highway removal wood chips, and they they got the prisons coming down to move them for us. You know, spread them out for us.
That's good.
So, because they don't have the staff to spread all that out. They worked it out between Lynn and Steve and Evan to get that done, so that's getting done tomorrow.
That's great.
Can I ask you guys, it's been a burning question, and I don't know if it's rumor mill, or, Tony, since you own, since you own Ogara apparently. When you go down there, are you are you are you finding unpleasant trees, like paraphernalia and? And and I've heard needles being down there and.
Needles, pipes.
They're all there.
Prophylactics, is that the right terminology?
A lot of net.
Yeah, TV friendly term for you.
Borderline disgusting, what you find down there.
Yeah, so you are, you are finding.
Bottles, a lot of.
A lot of bottles.
I don't know, if there's any down there, they don't last long, because every morning, there's someone down there picking them up.
Yeah, another reason we need, we need some surveillance.
Questionable people in the parking lot. When I pull up, doing who knows what, but as soon as I show up and they drive out. I get plate numbers, I turn them over to the police department, and those people never come back. But there's always someone else.
To replace you.
Yep. It's the number one place in town for people to let their dogs out and do what they gotta do. I think Evan's seen that quite a few times.
Do you have signage about that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, they're all.
Right.
Yeah, but the owners can, Evan, the owner sure can.
Yeah.
I, actually, last week, a guy got out, walked right by me, onto the field, let his dog do his business, and walked right back into his car. And I just held my hands up, he says, what, I'm a taxpayer.
Oh, wonderful. You know, I'm a taxpayer too, but I wouldn't dream of bringing my dog down there to do her duty.
People feel.
That's that's not the right answer, I'm sorry. They gave it, he gave it a wrong answer, and I mean.
And I I will say this, we do have a guy that trains dogs down there. And the first, first day, I said to him, make sure you pick up.
Yep.
What the dogs leave behind. And his remark to me was, my dogs go when I tell them to go, where I tell them to go. And I've never seen anything on that field after he's there.
Sure.
Ever.
Do we, excuse me, through the chair, do we need an ordinance to make it a fine, to bring your dog down there and not clean up after them? I hate to do that, but. But is there an ordinance where they can be fined? In other words, you see them, you file a complaint with the police, or the police see them. And they have to pay a fine.
Well, I'd like to talk to the police chief about being able to write tickets. In some fashion.
A doggy doo doo ticket, yeah.
Because, you know, if you catch someone doing that, then you have to call the police, wait for them to.
I know, yeah, and then they're gone.
Wait for their ticket.
They're gone, yeah, yeah.
And the police are down there quite a bit.
I'm sure they are, I mean, they do a good job, I mean, I'm not arguing with that.
Oh, no, I know, I'm just saying that we do.
Yeah.
Talking with the police chief, he's been.
But but to end up, but to sort of bring it to a more positive, no, we we also know from the people who. Been enjoying the concerts at Powder Mill, for the people who keep asking about Luther Hill when it's gonna be open, for the people in Ogara, I mean, they really do. The great majority of people recognize, we've got some tremendous recreational assets in what we're. And and what we're trying to do, and I and I hope it becomes clear, clear to everybody, when you you hear this this kind of report, that it's. That even though there are no, number one, even though there are no programs going on right now, there's there's still issues of security and 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 maintenance. We gotta hold on to what we've got. And then the whole side of 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 programming brings in a, brings in another set of of, you know, staff involvement and and supervision. In in funding, so I think it's it's good that this comes to us at this time, because as we we start the budget process, we know we're aware of. And it's not just, you know, swimming line and lifeguards, it's, there's more to Luther Hill than that, or. And and so we just gotta make sure we get all those 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 costs and needs out there in front of people, and it's. It is, it is unfortunate, I know, you know, Bill has made this point on the on the floor of the of the town hall at budget season, that, you know. Parks and Rec got zeroed out when when we really had to pull back. You know, a few years ago, and our our goal has been to try and build things back, and and Parks and Rec is is lagging in that in that return. But but credit to you guys with the creativity and your willingness to consider the partnerships, and I know Corinne is always bringing in grant ideas and. Trying to get people out there and, you know, donations, and and as you know, the the townwide yard sale is going forward, their, you know, their pledge to. You know, to devote a certain amount of that money to, you know, to to Parks and Rec. And I I'm very hopeful that a a a meeting that's made known to the public, where you guys can hear ideas and. Where you can actually bring in in certain groups in town, who who neighbors, or people who have a, who have a strong interest, a real stake in the in the parks. Will step forward and, you know, take on a share of this, because it's it's what it's gonna require.
Good question, do we have a suggestion box for the town?
I believe we do.
You're gonna fill it with ideas here?
Upstairs.
I'm sorry?
There's one upstairs, I think I, near the administrator's office.
Maybe we should take it away from the administrator's office and put it where they can just put it in, like a mailbox somewhere outside.
Yep.
Where nobody sees them, and they can do that, because that's the only way we're gonna get the town, and here are the taxpayers. To not open up the wallis, to study the wallis, and decide, if you wanna live here, we have to improve what we have.
Yep.
Because there's so many people I run into saying, well, you should be doing this. Yeah, we should be doing a lot of things, put it in the suggestion box.
Yep.
Somebody's gonna open it.
And I and I think as the as the process that we went through for the roads project attests to. When you have your act together and you and you communicate effectively to the public, and get them out to speak to you. We've, we, I I'm all for giving parks one of our workshops or one of our meetings. To have that public hearing, and to use the reverse nine-one-one to to advertise this thing, because it was very effective. Getting people out to the roads meetings, so that you guys can sit there and 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 get as many people as we can to to come speak to you. And also hear the challenges that you that you have, maybe people don't know the challenges that we we have, even after what we've gone through.
Well, the biggest thing we wanna explain is, every year Luther Hill's closed, it's gonna just double and double, what it's gonna take to reopen it.
And just remember this, is that the Lake Association is the one that's spraying that lake and keeping that lake functional. So when that park does open up, that they can swim in. So that's, those are the people you wanna thank also.
That's a really good point, I hadn't thought of that.
And that started nineteen ninety-one with myself and two other people. It's been going on ever since, because I've dealt with a lot of administrators here in this town about saying, we can't do this, and we can't do that. And the forty people around our lake, whether they're poor or not, they're giving something. So that's something you wanna consider and look at, other than the other people in the town saying, well, what are we supposed to do, though?
And when we do open the park, the sand has already been donated by the Fire Department Association, Fire Association. Not the Fire Department, the Fire Department Association.
Yes.
They have five hundred dollars for the sand put aside, in a separate account, just for. In it, for the sand if we open up, so they've been helping us out a lot, when they can.
And they fundraised that money quite a few years ago too, for the touch truck, the last Spencer family.
I keep coming back to this public hearing, I I hope, I hope that we get to a point where this public hearing you have will be the stage. Will be the staging for whatever we request. To get back to you in the budget. If this community's been very fair, when they're communicated to effectively and openly and multiple times. To to changing and and accepting requests, so I think it's very, very important, and anything we can do to help that, I think we should.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that they've been very good about supporting children. I served on two school building committees, chairman of one, first time we asked for the money to to build Knox Trail, and then Wire Village, we got it. So the taxpayers, if, to echo what Tony is saying, the taxpayers, if they're if they're shown what the need is. And you can convince them that there's a need, which I think you can, for the swimming lessons, opening the park. They respond positively, they've given us two dead exclusions for multimillion dollar buildings. And they, caring about kids, I think swimming lessons falls in that category, I don't think anybody wants to. See a child drown because he or she hasn't learned how to swim. So I think I think Tony's point is well taken, make a good presentation, and then follow up with it. And I think the voters will will respond in kind.
And we're also looking at, if the park opens up, there might be some small grant things we can do. Because matching fund stuff, because we can, what do they call, rooftop, car top.
Car top, car top boats, so that would be like your kayaking and stuff, there's a lot of DCR grants and different grants within the state. However, every year I update the list and bring it to the commission, see what we can apply for. A lot of them are matching fund grants, meaning that our town has to pay fifty percent, and the state will give us fifty percent. So to open it up to, you know, kayakers, maybe during a little bit more of the offseason, you know, during the fall or whatever, with, you know, stickers. Then we can get more money towards Luther Hill to, you know, update it and, you know, keep it going and testing the waters and stuff. But there are grants out there, it's just the fact that our town needs to put some money forward, so we can get some money.
You guys have no issues writing for grants, you guys have the skill set to 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 do that, and. Anything that we could, we could help you out of, out of the offices here, they should be helping if you if you need it, so.
It was like I said, there's nothing we can do right now with the park being closed, but Corinne does work on, look at that stuff all the time.
Yep.
And didn't you plan a grant possibly for Ogara, but we need to pinpoint the build date?
So there's a couple of grants for Ogara Park that we can apply for, one is a historic grant, so we'd make Ogara Park a historic monument. They'd be registered with the Historic Association of Massachusetts. That would give us enough money to update, not update it, but keep it in preserved condition. Back to whatever the earliest picture we can probably find of Ogara Park, we just haven't found the information to verify it, so we need something to. Validate what we all think is that the.
Exactly, when it was built, basically. What's the earliest one we found, like nineteen oh nine?
So nineteen oh nine, we have a picture from a World Series or something, from Wire Village Baseball Association against another team. Which was very big in Spencer, from what I've read. That's the earliest, if we can go back a little bit further than that, then we can get a lot of grant money through that. And that would just help getting those grandstands, so we can, you know, fill it up for baseball, for softball tournaments, you know. Soccer, whatever we can put down there.
Mr. Chairman, the Secretary of State Galvin has some grants too. I had written a grant back in the late nineties to put a new roof on the town hall, and was successful at getting it. And, you know, I can, I might be able to assist you when you go to write that grant, if you if you do write a grant to the Secretary of State's office.
Through the chair, I mean, these these these, this group needs just an opening to to get the capital through the capital process, they need to. You know, the the cameras are, you know, the cameras and the lighting, that's a.
Pretty fundamental.
That should, it's pretty fundamental, should be funded through the capital process, we've gotta find them an opening to to get get the money for it. Again, we'll do our best, do it again this cycle, you know, fight for it and prioritize it.
Like I said, we wanna do something that's good for the whole town, and not just to a little bit, we wanna. The right system, we don't, you know, we have one system, somebody else has another system, and that never works.
Yeah, I mean, that was good, we uncovered that in our last time, it was like, you know, always said, we have the request in the library, they're doing, basically, same that you're doing.
I think they exist there at the library.
Yeah, right.
It's not going back to the police station, I know Steve's. And they've been talking about that too, with the other departments. Because we're not the only ones that have problems. So that's something I think is townwide, I mean, the library's just for the library, inside the library. It's not going to the police department, so it's a different type of system. Not what we need, we need to go to the police department.
I think I would also add that, you know, we're talking, sometimes we talk about Parks and Rec like it's a world unto it on its own, when in fact it. It it affects the the whole quality of life in the whole town, because we talk about crime and vandalism and, you know, keeping kids busy and doing, involved in, you know. Creative, positive activities in the summer, I mean, that's the sort of thing, it it takes the burden off other, off other services and lessons demands in in other areas, and really puts. You know, you know, kids on the right track for the summer, having something for families to do, strengthen families, I mean, it's come up in in connection with our with our. Community Addiction Task Force, you know, it's about advocating for families and about an overall improvement in quality of life, so it's not as if. What you're talking about is just, you know, it's it's just not fair, although it's it's tends to be, you know. People think of it as swimming lessons, but there's a lot more than that, there are recreational opportunities, you know, throughout the year that that you could be, that we. You could be doing and and supporting our community with, so.
Through the chair, thanks for thinking creatively, thanks, and I hadn't realized it, thank you for each of you taking ownership of a of a park. That's greatly appreciated, I mean, that's going above and beyond what your your volunteer unpaid positioning calls for, so. Thank you very much, I know, I know the effort that goes with it.
Just a few years ago, we broke it all up, so it'd be so much for one person trying to do everything. And we do meet every month, it's on our, on the town website.
Maybe you wanna plug your last concert while you're here?
I don't have the exact date.
That's the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, it's coming Sunday.
At six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
We definitely wanna do that again next year, I mean, small group now, but.
It'll grow.
It'll grow, and.
That's cool.
You go by Lester's and East Brookfield, it's like, wow, it's really.
They started somewhere, I mean, at that point, when you when you grow, then you start getting, you know, Lester's is a lot of. Corporate contributions that go into, like that last one they had last year, they had three hundred people in the common for changes in latitudes. That was, one of our reps went and asked about that, and it was all through donations, the town didn't pay for that.
I received a call early in the year when I took over as chairman about doing this, and then there was a grant, cultural grant, when we worked on that and got that. Bill got that, and then we went from there, so Mark Lambie was one of the groups that was down there. So, and it promotes the park, people that don't use the park all the time, see what we have, so it's kinda nice. And if we ever get the other parks open, hey, it'd be nice to do a Sunday of Luther Hill, but, you know, something different.
I think, Mr. Chair, it's time to start, you know, you said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna big bang, bring everything back, but I think it's time to get some of these basic services back. Find a way to get it done.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
From us, we like to thank the other departments for helping us. You know, the police department, the highway department.
Of course.
The fire department used the signboard and doing things like that on their own time, helping us out, exchange club helping us out.
Sure.
And you're forgetting one big important part, our families for letting us.
Your spouses.
My daughter's been calling me about five or six times, you're supposed to come home with money for me. Yeah, and the Fire Association is with us, so without them helping us, we can't do this, so.
Right. We're glad you came.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, appreciate the report.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Just to, just gonna add a couple things, just just a reminder of the, on the, the last concert of the year at Powder Mill Park on on Sunday, at six o'clock.
Sunday the twenty eighth.
It's coming Sunday the twenty eighth, and just a heads up that Tony and and Ralph and I were able to to get to the Eagle Scout Award Ceremony, our lady queen of the rosary. And we will have the family in to, for a presentation, with the cameras rolling.
Mr. Chairman, I ran into Joseph's mother and Price Chopper today, and they were very. Mr. Chairman, I ran into Joseph's mother and Price Chopper today, and they were very, she was very appreciative that we took the time to go.
It was, it was quite a, a very elaborate ceremony.
Very impressive, very impressive.
Mr. Chairman, we saw, since we're not meeting in, before, we shall also mention the Spencer Fair.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, you're right. Here we are, it's occurring September.
Labor Day weekend.
Everyone go, it's a great event.
Good time.
It'll be great weather. Okay, I'll take that motion again, too.
Motion to adjourn.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We didn't forget Chris's second.
Eight sixteen.
Chris Woodbury's second is...
Chris did, Chris did, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, that does...
And when we, we're meeting again September twelve?
Is Steve going to that, Peter?
September twelve.
Next meeting's September.
Regular meeting. All right.